Okay, Brenda. I hereby reconvene to July 22nd, 2014, meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:00 PM. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Ms. Michelle Kernan, Federal Program Coordinator, please introduce the students and teachers who are assisting you with the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having early learning come here to do the inspiration and pledge. In the past, when we've had this opportunity, we've always highlighted some research on early learning to highlight the importance of reaching kids at this young age. But tonight, we're going to do something a little different. We're going to unveil two new initiatives that we are going to be providing the community next year utilizing this research. The first one is our Provider Kindergarten Readiness Transition Program. We have engaged the private providers of Marion County in a meeting, and they told us what they wanted the school system to provide them for us to help them get their kids ready for kindergarten. And the results of that meeting is they want electronic information, kindergarten readiness packets, some of our manipulatives, and the new standards for kindergarten as they come out. That is being funded out of the VPK Assessment Grant. Our second initiative is done with, in partnership with Marion County Public Library. It's called Prep, Pre-K Readiness Education Program. And once a month, at every branch in the county, we will be having a one-hour session. The target audience is parents of children aged three to five that do not have their children enrolled in an early learning program. We're going to have a circle time. We're going to go over some standards and, of course, give them activities to work with their child at home, utilizing the standards but doing it through play. So we're hoping both of those new initiatives will raise Marion County's kindergarten readiness rate. This evening with me, I have Diane Copley. She is the summer VPK coach, and she will be introducing our very special guests.
I have a question before you go on. How are you going to reach the parents of VPK for the library sessions?
We're reaching them multiple ways. We're partnering with the Early Learning Coalition as well as United Way. We have, the library had some early learning programs already, so we're going to be utilizing those parents as well as Mr. Christian, and we are going to be sending flyers home with the students in our elementary schools.
Great. Thank you.
It's my privilege to spend the summer coaching the 2014 Summer VPK Program. And I'd like to introduce to you two of our 11 teachers who worked in the program. The first one is Carolyn Roach and her partner Katie McGrath. Both of them are at Madison Street for the summer, and here are their children. Thank you.
They're so cute. Look at how many they have. Oh, my gosh.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its strength, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where's Tammy?
Okay. For the parents out there that would like to get a better shot, why don't y'all come up front and get some shots? If y'all back there, come on, get you some shots.
Are you guys all ready for kindergarten?
Yeah.
Okay. Woo!
They're really good at following directions.
Yeah, they did good.
Yeah.
Wow.
This one's the boss.
Yeah.
Which one?
That one.
Yeah. That's why I said that's, I said she looks like Tammy. I could picture Angie's little girl at that age beating the boss.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Good for them.
Very good.
Thank you. Very good.
Good job. Y'all did wonderful. Your teachers are going to be so happy.
My kids went to programs. They didn't go, um, Till went to two days. The boys went to...
Couple minutes.
All morning.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the July 22nd, 2014 School Board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting. The audio recording and DVD included is part of the official recording of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Second. So moved by Mr. Crawford, second by Ms. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the, for the forward? May 28, 2014 Special Work Session, in-house attorney. June 5, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session, June 10, 2014 School Board Meeting. June 24, 2014 School Board Meeting. June 25, 2014 Special Work Session, in-house attorney. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Saying none, I call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. Mr. Chester Gregory, Superintendent of Operations, would like to recognize our special custodial team. Mr. Gregory.
Good evening, Mr. James, board members, Mr. Superintendent. Back in mid-October of last year, you remember that the norovirus took over East Marion Elementary School. I'm here tonight to introduce you a number of individuals that spent long days, long nights, weekends getting the school clean. And I mean, not once did they go through the school and constantly clean everything, every desk, every restroom. They did it night after night for several weeks. And these people did it, did a very tremendous job, and we felt like it was very important to bring them forth tonight and recognize them. So I'll call them up. Ms. Kim Clayton, who is the lead custodian out at East Marion. We have Deborah Mitchell, right over here, Kim. Richard Ramus, Janie McRae, Greg Roach, and Mr. Frank Woods, who is the zone coordinator for East Marion. So, anyway, I certainly would like to recognize their hard work and accomplishment in making that school safe for a number of days, through a number of days, and also let you know that these people also helped out with the transportation side as far as going out there and taking care of the buses, getting cleaned out. So, hands, a round of applause for these individuals.
It's one of these things. I'll, I'll, Ms. Crawford.
Well, it's going to be Stacey who had the first hand option.
I was just wondering if they got sick at all.
I believe one of you did, yes.
Okay.
Yes. And that's a good point, Ms. Stacy, because you remember, they worked around this stuff day and night.
Yeah.
And to have only one get sick during this whole process, that's outstanding.
It is good, yeah.
Ms. Crawford, that's your area. I have to...
Uh, uh, thank you. You know, a lot of people remember that many, many, many years ago, we were threatened with a pandemic. They thought we were going to have the avian flu come in. And this was like a test run for us, and that didn't happen. You all did a marvelous job. I mean, you literally did it by the book. You saved an outbreak that could have, could have expanded from, because remember, there are children that were going to East Marion that have siblings at, at Fort McCoy, and then that would have spread on to North Marion High School, and then down into North Marion. I mean, it would have just, once it got loose, and the work that you all put in, I can't say thank you enough. You, you, above and beyond. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We do appreciate it. That's for sure.
Mr. Gregory, I just want to echo what the board has said, because we know that when we look at our kids, it's just not the teachers. It is all the support staff that made the work, this thing worked. And I, and again, on behalf of the board and all of the kids, thank you for a job well done. And I just want you to know, we really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
What I have on the agenda is, is just a, a brief break in our traditional accustomed way we do business. One of the reasons I wanted to do this is because I want to make sure that we, once again, get academically focused on student achievement. The thing I would just like to share with you is this. I had an opportunity to go out and visit with all of our A-plus schools, the ones that really went beyond the call of duty and became an A-plus. And what I was looking at, and what I knew, is that it's data-driven. Data-driven for student achievement. And this is what I would like to remind the board that we are, we are for student achievement, and the data that we can get from a balanced scorecard is incredible. And you all will be getting that information. I promise you that. Judy said it would be here today, but if it's not, it'll be here tomorrow. But it's here. A balanced scorecard, but it answered the questions that Ms. Stacy had. A balanced scorecard. A balanced scorecard is similar to what a kid get. If Johnny is my child and he's going to school, Johnny, well, at the end of the first nine weeks, we know where Johnny is. We know what he's doing. We know if he needs some, we need to address certain areas. But we have the information that I'm asking the superintendent to present to us in the form of a balanced scorecard. It'll give us the data. It'll let us know. We have benchmarks that we can measure. It can give us the, the person that's responsible, that's in charge. It will, it will align our school district toward, to everything that we do will be toward student achievement. It will be in the form of that. It will give us how our funds are being spent, what they're being spent for, how they're being used. This is what this is. I have to commend Ms. Pam Brewer, because she had, everything that we were looking for, you saw it tonight. She had it. And what they will, what it will do, it will put that data into a form that we can use. And what, the thing that I really like about this, Mr. Superintendent, is the fact that we can even much focus our SAC meetings on what those, those are the needs at that particular school for, because they can look at their school, they can look at what teachers are performing, they can look at the students. And I know, and you know, that there's, that all of the principals that I visited had a data wall, and they knew where all these kids were, and they knew what, what resources they had. And so, this is what this is about. And I would like for the superintendent, because I know his staff have this information, is to present us something in the form of that. And I've scheduled a work session on September 18th, just so people, so we can bring somebody in, so it can enlighten the board on what a balanced scorecard can do. It's not going to cost us anything. It'll give us some things where we align with businesses and things like that. I also would like to commend the superintendent on, on what he's been doing. And at this time, I would like for the superintendent, at this time, if just, if he could just bring us up to date on the things that he'd been working on, so we can get academically focused. And this is what it is. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for that opportunity, and it's a pleasure to address the board. Firstly, we'd like to express thanks to Mr. Joel Callahan from the Star Banner for aptly, I guess, naming something, the six-step process. And I did mention six different things that our district was working on as a direct result of receiving FCAT scores. That list has grown, Mr. Callahan, so now we have more than six steps to that, and it will continue to grow as we add different things. Members of the board, you already know that I have met with our individual principals in individual meetings, and we have focused on being instructional leaders and asking them how the district can support them in their leadership role as instructional leaders. You know, we're also surveying teachers that are attending our summer professional development. Donna Otso is coordinating the gathering of that information, which will be presented to you. You know that I ask our program specialists to analyze our data initially, and then also from that initial analysis to select and then invite teachers to what we would call teacher talk roundtables. We had almost 150 participants in that program, and that is a little more difficult to compile, and Mrs. Brewer and her staff are compiling that information right now and will be given to you. We've also been participating with our program specialists, supervisors, and coordinators at the district level in what we call a data dig, in which we then look at the data that we have, and not only the FCAT data, but other information that we have. The demographics of our, of our school system, the impact of substitute teachers last year, and a variety of things. Those two measures, the teacher talks and data dig, will be presented to you at a later time when we get that appropriately compiled. You also know that next Monday and Tuesday, we are having a principal mini-conference. We've talked about that. If you would like, I would ask, I'll ask Mrs. Underwood to forward you a rough agenda of that. Would you like that? We can do that by email, and you're certainly welcome to attend if you'd like to come to that. As one of the things in, one of the presentation moments at that principal mini-conference, our principals will be also addressing the principals and their feeder patterns, the state of the schools' address, on what they intend to do this next school year. You also know, I've announced to you that I've invited the DOE Office of School Improvement to come in the month of October and do a district system review. I have talked to two other superintendents who've gone through this process, and they receive valuable information that can analyze all aspects of their, their system, not only just student achievement and curriculum, but also transportation, finance, and all the departments that we have. As a result of those things, I can share with you that we're also, I believe, using much better use of our Title I dollars. We haven't done anything wrong in the past, but we have been able to focus some dollars on something that our teachers have told us for a long time, and we also know that we are hiring an additional number of paraprofessionals this year, 55 to be exact. Every school is getting one, and then we're assigning multiple paraprofessionals to some of our schools that we believe have the greatest need. They will be directed by a coordinator, also funded by Title I. And then, of course, you have read about our extended learning schools in the newspaper. We've talked about that before. We have five schools designated by their reading scores as part of the bottom 300 schools in the state of Florida. We have a very detailed plan for, for their improvement. I anticipate bringing other things to you as we add to this list, and certainly as I get complete reports to you, I'll be sharing those with you. Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you. And one of the things I would just like to just share with you, a balanced scorecard will, will let us know where he is, who's accountable, and it will, will give us an update, and you will find that you'll be able to track all of this. And I know it's out there, and Mr. Superintendent, work with us on that one, because this is, I know this is the issue, student achievement and accountability.
May I comment on something Mr. Thomas said? I've spoken to several teachers who were, participated in the teacher's talk, teacher talks. They were all very, very positive. And what, what they did was work in groups, and the principal got to select teachers at each school where their test scores really were outstanding. And they worked in groups and worked on what was working for them as far as achievement in the classroom and what their needs were. And I believe that's one of the reasons the paras came up there. You know, they, we've, over the years, we've lost paras, but very, very positive comments from the teachers. And I look forward to, to getting that information when Ms. Brewer compiles. She has an awful lot, but I look forward to looking at it and seeing what comes from that. You said you've already had quite a few of the questions that they had answered, so that's great. So, we're moving in the right direction.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We will know that. Okay. We'll continue, board. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted?
So moved.
So moved. There, you have a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to recede the tentative budget, approve the tentative budget for advertising purposes only, and to set a public hearing on the tentative budget for Tuesday, July 29, 2014, at 5:00 PM in the board room. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
There was some move by Ms. Boynton, second by Mr. Ely. Are there any discussion? Saying none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the following donation? $1,000 to Bellevue High School from the Rotary Club of Bellevue. $2,000 to Bellevue High School from Bellevue High School Girls Soccer Boosters. $1,000 to Dr. Edith Jones Elementary School from Asvet Purvin. $30,000 to Dr. N. H. Jones Elementary School from Dr. N. H. Jones Parent Organi- Parent Organization. $3,900 to Dr. Edith Jones Elementary School from Dr. Jones Parent Organization. $1,078.90 to Howard Academy Community Center from the Learning Wheel. $17,200 to Marion County Public School Homeless Needed Children from the Kingdom of the Sun Chapter Incorporated, DBA, Military Officers Association of America. $2,500 to Marion Technical Institute from their business partner, Centered Lake via the Public Education Foundation. $3,500 to the Silver River Museum from their business partner, Cannon Law Firm, PA. $1,000 to Stan Wesdell Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for many grants, empowering our students by giving them ownership. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
And second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. 5-0. Ms. Boynton, will you thank our constituents this time?
I would just like to tell our constituents, our, our donors, thank you for thinking about our students all the time. It's every meeting that I'm sitting here that I, I can see that your heart goes out and that you believe in student achievement and that you donate sometimes so healthy. I'm looking at this $30,000 to N. H. Jones, and I'm sure the students there, as well as the teachers, are going to truly appreciate it. And from all our board members, I want to say thank you once again.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. Meeting reminders. Special Board meeting is, meeting to hold a public hearing on the tentative budget for 2014 and 2015 physical year is scheduled for Tuesday, July 29, 2014, at 5:30 PM. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, August 7, 2014, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of this work session is to receive an investment summary and to begin review of the proposed 2014-2015 budget with discussion of the general fund. An executive session regarding union negotiation will be held upon the adjournment of this meeting. Our board members, we will ask for concerns and some of your comments. So I don't know where I started last time. We will start with Mr. Crawford.
Oh, nothing. Thank you.
Ms. Stacy.
I don't really have much to say. Just that several years ago, I know we were ranked 44th, and I just looked at school digger, and we're now ranked 56th, based upon the latest, and that's, you know, the latest up to the day of everything. It seems as though our school system is totally under siege by, from so many forces. And one of the major forces is corporate cronyism. And this, the profiting that's happening off of remediation programs and things, and tests, and, you know, we have common core that basically, I call it, a system of testing and sanctions. Our school system is, our students now live under testing, and the teachers live under sanctions. I hope that the school board members can work together to try to get us through this as, as best we can, because sometimes it seems to me like we are fighting this war as though... as though Boy Scouts are fighting the Nazis. It's like if we sent the Boy Scouts or the Cub Scouts to fight the Nazis, maybe the Cub Scouts instead of the Army, and it seems like the Army's not out here fighting this. And hopefully, we can build an army together to try to, maybe, maybe what Tallahassee and the Department of Education tells us we have to do, if it's wrong, we won't do it. Sometimes it seems like the followers of education do things that they know is wrong. It's wrong for students. And I have teachers telling me that, you know, there's things that we're having to do in math, and I'm just, and I still throw in the old math to help the students, because I know that's the right thing to do. It's so much easier for the students to do it, I throw it in. And I so appreciate the teachers who do not just do as they're told, something that's wrong, and that they are instead doing what they know is right. And my hat's off to those teachers. And I'm looking forward to them becoming more vocal. But it looks like over the next couple of years, education's gonna be in, nationwide with the Common Core and the floundering around and the testings and the sanctions. And Chris, I appreciate, you know, this is a time when I'm on the same page as the Teachers Union with, with what's happening there. We can no longer just test our students on certain things that the test is on. We have students that are not well-rounded. We have students that know nothing about anything in life except for what's on that test. And they're going out into the world, and they can't even, and I watch them on television, and they're interviewing them on the streets, and they don't even know who the president is or the vice, they don't know, they have no knowledge except what's on the test. And so, I'm gonna be interestingly following that, because I'm seriously concerned about a system that's run basically on sanctions. We can't have that. And thank you for giving us that information. I appreciate it. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Ely?
We are gonna be an army, working together for the same cause, for our students. Mr. Vianello, who's head of student services, executive director of student services, wrote a great article in Sunday's paper, and you can pull it up on okala.com. It was called "Engage in Education." This is an organization, a group of community leaders, collaborative community initiative, working together since last fall, trying to see, take a look at the community and see what we can do as a community, not just the teachers, but the community, to see what we can, how we can help understand the schools better. The plan revolves around the four core issues, understanding of school funding and budgeting, improve public perception of our schools, enhance communication, and fostering broader stakeholder engagement. There have been 160 participants this year in seven community focus groups going on throughout the year, and the details of this action plan will be unveiled at 5:30 p.m. August 28 at Forest High Auditorium. I encourage the public to please attend. I look forward to attending, and I believe that we're gonna see a lot of positive results from our community support that we're getting. Mr. Tom, I appreciate you initiating this.
Witness, Carol?
August 28 at 5:30 at Forest High Auditorium.
Okay. We'll come back, I'm sorry. Ms. Borington?
Well, since he didn't want me to talk, it's because I was gonna hold his button up, you know, that we received from Chris Abatella. He's the president of the Marion Education Association and Union here, and it says, "Our kids are more than a test score." And I'm sure every board member up here stands behind that, and we believe in that. And we want to thank you, Mr. Abatella, for bringing it to us, and we look forward to getting your information that you shared with us earlier. Really appreciate that. He did say he went to his national meeting, and over 9,000 participants were there, and I think that's a plus for all of our students. And, of course, I'm in that army too. We're gonna be fighting this for our children. I want to make mention also, we all received an email from the superintendent regarding a parent's request to remove her child from one, one school to another. And I just want to let the public know that, I'm sure a lot of you are concerned, and I know there have been a lot of calls, not as many as we would have thought, but I know Mr. Burke's been working overtime, and he actually, he and I sat with that parent yesterday, and I'm gonna send, give my report to the superintendent, and I made sure that the information from Madison Street is included. And the board members, if you like a copy, I can pass it down to you, too. And it's just, a parent was just not, not just, you know, unhappy with a child at a certain school, but we made every effort to sit with her and work things out, and if any parent has any concern, make sure you understand that the board is here, willing to sit with you and work things out for you as best we can. Thank you.
I will, and we have to come back to you, if you have anything at this point.
I am pleased to announce that I have no legal matters you need to be aware of.
That's a good thing. That's very good.
That's good.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of the figures here I'd like to brag on our school system. You know that we partner and sponsor the Silver River Museum. Director Scott Mitchell has given me some information to share with you, that just this past school year, that almost 5,000 students attended the Silver River Museum on specific field trips. Over 7,700 persons attended O'Callie Days, and almost half of those were students. We had a special program out there called the NAP Inn, and a little over 2,000 individuals from our community participated in that for a total of almost 15,000 visitors to the Silver River Museum, and a great, great project that we have going on out there. This summer, we've also, we also sponsor, as you know, Camp Kiwanis, and we have some resources that we send out there. We have completed our summer camps out there, and we had 412 campers who attended. And Mr. James and I will pat ourselves on the back, because our local Kiwanis club does sponsor a number of those, and about 25% of those were sponsored by our local club. Earlier this week, Janet Weldon sent to you some results from our advanced placement scores this year, and I want to share with you that there are two factors that go together that are very, very meaningful. One is that our pass rate has continued to be steady, about 40%. Advanced Placement tells us that between 40 and 60% of our students should be passing. If we have a higher number than 60% or 70%, that probably means we're being too selective in letting students in. If we have below 40%, that means we are probably letting the wrong students, not identifying the exact students that should go in there. So, we have more students taking exams this year. We had over 2,200 students taking AP exams compared to about 1,500 last year. So, more students being challenged by these courses, and it's very good for us. They look very good for students on the high school transcripts. Our college admissions like to see that those AP scores, and they like to see that students have been through that rigorous academic challenge, and it also helps prepare our students for post-secondary work, that rigorous challenge. I'm proud of all the counselors, teachers, and administrators who have pointed and counseled and directed students to take those programs. If you're interested in more information about that, Lauren Barber or Janet Weldon in our guidance office can, can help you with that. Another thing, I drove out to Legacy Elementary School this past weekend, just to share with you that the additional driveway and sidewalk is right on schedule. We should be ready to go at the beginning of the year, and you can also see what our impact dollars did as far as supporting that local community and building sidewalks for safe access for our children. I encourage you to go out there. And then the final thing, Mr. Chairman, I've been giving to you, as the summer progressed, on summer school statistics in reference to our Plato lab. I'm very, very proud to say that 215 of our middle school students have completed one or more courses, which means that 131 students have been now promoted from the eighth grade to the ninth grade. Prior to this, they would have been retained in eighth grade. On the high school level, over 300 students have completed one or more course, and as a result of that, we have 50 more graduates from the Marion County Public School System from this school year, and I'm very proud of those persons who've been working, and again, also proud of the students who participated in that. That's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. One of the things I just want to share with the board, and this is, this is something I just feel that I have to say. Reading the newspaper and looking at where our scores are and things like that, it's always interesting. But if we ought to move this, if we ought to move this, we have to, we have to engage our system in terms of work. And let me explain where I am with this. When you move a school district, you're gonna have people that's gonna be crying wolf. They're gonna be, they're gonna, for whatever reason, they're, because Johnny is doing this, and their test scores, and they're afraid of the test scores. We have to work our system. Guys, if we go into schools, and this is one of the first things that we learned from the Florida School Boards Association, when you got, when you got that visiting classroom as a school board member, your role changed. So, if we, we know that we're gonna have some difficult time, because we're gonna have to move teachers and people that may not want to do some of the things that they may not just want, not want to do it, to do what their administrator asked them to do. Please allow the system to work. If they have some complaints, let's say, have you talked with your principal? And then they got the MEA out there that can channel these things, because this is gonna be some tough sledding, and we know this. When you get enough, and I'm an old coach, when you start getting into a big football game, there're gonna be some head knocking. But we have to get to the point where we, at the point where we rely on the system, and with a balanced scorecard, we can know where everything is. And I will tell you this, they have every, they, we can identify the things that we want measured. I'm saying this simply because I know we're getting ready to start a school year, and I know that we will have people out there that will be concerned about what's happening, and they will come to us, and they will try and get us to divide the team. And I heard a unify, I've heard almost a unifying message tonight, and I just know that we ought to move in that direction. If we ought to move in that direction, we're gonna have to work together as a team, and I hope we can start with this, when the superintendent presents this balanced scorecard, because you can see all the information that you are wanting, and if it's not there, ask for it, and so we can measure it, and we'll know where we are at the end of the nine weeks, and we'll know what school we have. And so, this is what I'm hoping that we can get, but it sounds real good tonight. Let's play ball. Thank you. Okay. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through June 26, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of students regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 14-109, JD 14-110, JD-14-111, JD 14-112 with educational service through the 2014-2015 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Borington, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. The chair now recognize the school board attorney, Ms. Susan Segal. Ms. Segal?
Board members, on behalf of Attorney Gary Sanders of the law firm of Vice Cole, I am notifying you that advice is needed regarding a claim pending in the Risk Management Department filed by Carolyn Marshall Carrera as mother and next friend of Maribel Carrera, a minor child, and as mother and next friend of Tiana Marshall Carrera, a minor child. Pursuant to Florida Statute 768.28, subsection 16, I have requested a session with the board for the sole purpose of evaluating the claim and discussing potential resolution of the claim. I've asked the board secretary to cause reasonable notice of the time and place of this session and the names of the person attending to be published. As required, only the superintendent or designee, board members, and legal counsel can be present. I have asked her court reporter to record the session, as is also required. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with Brenda Flotketter as clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of the threatened litigation or at the conclusion of the actual litigation, if the claim cannot be resolved before suit is filed, the transcript will be made public record.
Thank you. We acknowledge your request, the terms, the terms to appear to be in compliance with Florida statute. Board members, you have heard our attorney's request. As chair, I'm announcing an attorney-client session. The statutes state that I also must announce the commencement of the session, the estimated time of the session, and the names of the person attending. This session will commence as soon as the room is cleared and the court reporter is set up following a five-minute recess to clear the room. I will, it will last approximately one hour. The names of the, of the persons attending are Ms. Angie Borington, Mr. Ron Crawford, Ms. Carol Ely, Bobby James, Nancy Stacy, Superintendent George Tomlin, Attorney Gary Sanders, and Attorney Susan Segal. I will declare a brief recess to be followed by an attorney-client session. The session will start, and I will call the brief recess at 6:45. So I'm calling the brief recess at this time.